Call to order the city council meeting for Tuesday, June 6th, 2023. If I could get a roll call, please.
Gesmi.
Here.
Groot.
Here.
Jepson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kronenberger is absent. Lundell.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could get a motion to approve our amended agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Gesmi.
A second.
Second by Groot. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. That gets us to our public input. Public input is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns to the city council. The public input will be no longer than 30 minutes in total length, and each speaker will have no more than three minutes to speak. Speakers may address topics relevant to the governance of the city. Speakers must sign up in advance and must provide their name, address, and the topic they intend to address. Comments must be on topic, respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. Any speaker that violates these rules will be asked to sit down. If the speaker refuses to comply, they may be removed from the meeting. Speakers shall not address topics that are the subject of a public hearing. All such comments shall be made at the public hearing. The city council will not generally act on issues raised by the public input, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. First up, Rosie Schluter.
South Dakota has Mount Rushmore with all those four 60-foot stone faces. Well, Minnesota has...
Right on the bottom of that microphone. Laura's got you.
Microphone.
There you go.
Okay. Wow. Okay. Did you all hear me before, so I don't have to repeat that? Okay. I have no idea what I said anyways. Okay. Mount Rushmore. Okay. 60-foot stone faces, and we have Minnesota's Bud Grant named stone face. Yes. So, what I was thinking, we have got these empty granary bins, these huge things in town, or else we've got other places, and we could put a 40-foot to 60-foot head of Bud Grant, our stone face. It's just a suggestion. I think people like me, a Vikings fan, we would travel all over just to see it. So, that's my suggestion to you, and if you give me any advice of who to contact and who to things to do. There's other places in town, too, but wow, when I was driving down 52 and I saw those empty grain bins, I thought that would be super great. Okay. Less than three minutes, right?
There you go.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Rosie.
You don't want yours up there on the next one?
Thank you.
All right.
I am going to pull this out, and there. I didn't do anything wrong. Okay.
Thank you. Brian Douglas, Terrace Nursing Home and Noise Ordinances.
Yeah, Brian Douglas, 1124 Minnesota Street West. Two things. We live on, you know, Dow Street is where the terrace, and it was nice to see that the lawn was mowed this week because it was getting pretty long, but just wondering, is there any thing on what's going to happen with that building? Do, I mean, is it just up to the owner to just leave it there if they decide not to come back, or what's the situation? Because I have a feeling it's just going to get more dilapidated, and every time I drive down Dow, you can see that things are getting worse and worse. Does anybody have any idea what's going to happen with that building?
Normally, this, normally, we don't treat this like a question and answer.
Oh, okay, okay.
If you want to stay after, I think we could probably have a quick conversation.
All right, next. Okay. Then the next one is the noise ordinance. Of course, you know, last weekend was the demolition derby, and of course, we have the same situation we have, what we came here last time for was for the racing. But is, this was not during fair time, so I was wondering, is a noise ordinance work if it's, if their noise that they're making is not during the fair time? You know, if it's like, like this one was an off weekend, then when the fair is, they were out till 12:30 in the morning, there was still demolition derby going on, noise going on, and I'm like, wow, I got to find out what the noise ordinance here in this town is. Is there a level, or do I have to wait till afterwards to ask that question, too? Okay. Well, those are my two things that I'm concerned about. I'll talk to you afterwards. Thanks.
Thanks, Brian. Babel Gorman to speak about data requests.
As you know, I didn't make the last meeting, but I was here a couple of meetings ago, and I asked about some minutes for a Public Works Commission meeting, and I didn't get any answers here, or did I get any answers anywhere else? So I went to the next Public Works meeting, and I had to ask repeatedly, but finally, in the end, Derek was nice enough to give me his minutes. And the only problem I'm having is I think that they're supposed to be readily available, and they should be available to the public. In fact, Diane's even talked about getting them on the website, which I can pull the minutes from the council meeting off the website, but I can't come to a meeting and get a copy of them? It doesn't make sense to me. And then my name showed up on the last council just incorrect claims, which is unusual because I've never seen this happen before, and Lisa brought it up, and she was nice enough not to name me, but I think she knew it was me, but, and I'm okay with that. I don't have a problem asking for public information. What I do have a problem with is you folks all sitting here, and nobody's told you that I have to pay for those. And right here, I've got a bill for $993.93 for a data request. Seems a little outrageous, doesn't it? Well, it is. Especially when what I'm really looking for is some police commission meeting minutes and some information that you should all have, and it should all be public, about the candidate that you hired on the police force. Now, I just turned on the news tonight, and they're all up in arms in Minneapolis because they've hired an officer that some citizens don't approve of, and the citizens are involved, and I don't see anybody browbeating them or discouraging them from coming forward. In fact, the news is putting them right on the air. So I'm wondering why Neil did not share with you that I have to pay for these, and I know that I've talked with several of you, and you did not know that. No one has ever asked what it is that I'm asking for, and that seems odd to me. And what really seems odd to me is that I asked the question to several of you about Project Tulip. Project Tulip costs more than four times what you think this data request cost you without you knowing that I'm paying for it, and none of you know what Project Tulip is that I'm aware of, and if there is. Please, somebody speak up. Tell me, what is Project Tulip? I'd love to know.
Your time is up.
Thanks.
Normally, we don't react, but if you would like to share, if any resident does a data request, the rate is for the paper, I believe, or if you would like to share what the, what constitutes that bill?
Kind of complex. Most data requests, the requestor doesn't pay for them. Once they reach a certain criteria, the city can charge time and material, per se.
Yeah.
This data request was very in-depth, and it took one of my staff members five and a half hours to put it together, and that was just one eye, one person.
Did it cost the city more than $993.93?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
That was my whole point you bring up.
And we have not been paid for that yet, by the way.
So it's just a bill that hasn't been paid?
Right.
Okay. All right. Moving on. Consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. Item A, just incorrect claims for the accounting period that ended on May 30th, 2023. Item B, meeting minutes for May 16th, 2023 city council meeting. Item C, approve market analysis and grid calibration. Item D, approve the home wedding request. Item E, approve hire of unscheduled part-time employee for the ambulance department. Item F, approve hire of an administrative assistant and permit technician. Item G, approve hire of public works director. Item H, approve purchase of utility locator. Item I, approve Bill's blacktop quotes. J, approve pavement resources crack ceiling quote. And item K, approve hire of unscheduled part-time employee for the ambulance department. Is there any item that the council would like to pull down for council business?
I have some questions about item A, or I, I'm sorry.
I. Is it discussion, or would you like it pulled down?
We better pull it down.
Okay.
It won't take long.
Okay. We'll pull, uh, blacktop quotes. Item I will be item B for council business. Anything else from the council?
Just, again, another quick one, um, utility locator.
Mm-hmm. Yep. You'd like that pulled down? Okay. H will then be C in council business. Not hearing any other, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Motion from Jepson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Diane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Moving on to council business. Item A, 4th of July is the first Tuesday of the month, next month, so it is being suggested that we have one meeting and move that to July 11th. So just one meeting for the month of July on the 11th. Any comments, questions, discussion from the council? Hearing none, I would accept, accept a motion to approve the July 11th city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
There, there was a race between Steve and Derek. Well, Derek made the motion, Steve got the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Item B, the approval of Bill's blacktop quotes. Ryan.
The only question I have is there, we're going to be tarring over EDA property? That'd be the old Lee Chevrolet garage, correct?
Yeah.
So is, is like, the city going to assume that? Or can like, EDA sell that later on, and we already blacktopped it?
Well...
They can, but it's been this way for how many years now?
Yeah, I understand that. It's parking.
And it's parking. We can better use, utilize the, the striping of it if it's blacktopped. When, I believe it was the winery did some soil borings out there, and, and when we had a meeting with him, he had mentioned what he found underneath there. It seems like it's going to be...
Well, I can about imagine what's...
It seems like it's going to be quite some time before we see a building up there.
Okay.
So if it's 10 or 15 years, or whatever it takes, it'll be well worth the, the amount that we're paying for that patch.
Gotcha.
Are you, are you thinking that it should come out of the EDA budget? Is that what you're...
I didn't know if, whether it was being EDA, or, I didn't know. That's why I asked.
Oh, it's a good question.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a fair question. I think as it's been since the Lee Chevrolet building was torn down, it's basically been considered, treated as an extension of the city parking lot, and I think that's the intent.
Right. And I think most people downtown would appreciate it. It's, it's kind of a mess as we speak.
Yeah, just asking Laura, I mean, is there a possibility that the EDA might be willing to give that property to the city? Or does one not do that? I don't even know how that works.
I guess we haven't really discussed it too much because it's just been serving as a...
Parking lot.
Parking lot. You know, I mean, and it's full all the time, so I guess it's been serving its purpose. I guess we haven't brought it up as far as if it would be gifted back to the city or whatnot, but I mean, we could put it on the agenda for discussion. Absolutely.
Thank you.
With all that said, I would take a motion to approve the approval of Bill's blacktop quotes.
So moved.
Motion by Diane. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Lisa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Council business, item C, approving the purchase of a utility locator. Diane.
And I, I'm totally in favor of it. I just wondered, does this locate, would it locate lead service lines also, or is it just like gas lines, water mains? I don't know what it does.
Yes, but we don't know which ones are lead, and I remember your question at the Public Works and about the lead lines. We have done quite a bit of work already on lead lines, locating them every time we get into a, into a house to fix them, whatever. We mark them down, whether they're lead or they're copper. You mentioned the money that has been appropriated this year for grants. We are going to apply for some of that, just so the council knows that, that will give our engineering firm some money to, to get a map and get everything put together, and we can get it all stamped out where all the lead lines are. You know, every city has lead lines still, depending on how old the houses are and if there's been reconstructions done. Will it know where the lead lines are? No. Will it know where the services are? Yes. We'll mark the, you know, your little round shut-off, they'll mark them. What's great about this is they can go right back to the spot in the middle of the winter and, and hit it instead of searching, right, with the wand, as you've seen. And then we'll get a, our maps, right now, they're kind of a mess. They've been around for a long time. You, you kind of treat them with, with just, it might be close. So it'd be nice when the guys are out and, and looking at jetting the sewer lines or flushing hydrants, they can run up and down the block while they're, and marking and setting these valves and the hydrants and the manholes, and then download them onto the system. It's going to be a fairly nice map when we're done. Typically, what happens is an engineering firm would do that for you, and now with the technology nowadays, you don't need that. You just need more of an IT guy that knows how to download it and, and work with you on that. So we'll do all the, all the marking as time goes on. You know, they do about a quarter of the town on jetting the sewers every year, so they'll, they'll get the majority of it done in four years. So should be pretty good.
When did they ban lead, Neil? Do you remember? The lead pipes?
No, it's been a long time.
Yeah. 1986.
86.
Thanks, Cliff.
It's kind of random to know. Good trivia.
I did this with Jim and Tack down in the system, and they were the Fort Michigan people.
Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of the...
Utility.
Utility locator.
So moved.
I got a motion from Diane, a second from Steve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Reports. We can start with Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a quick update from the chamber. Last week, we had our first Fun Fest of 2023, and it was a success. The weather, it was hot, but the rain held off till the very end, so that was great. We had a really good crowd. Lawrence Meats gave away all 400 of their free hot dogs. We had a lot of activities, entertainment. It was a great night in Cannon Falls. Next up are trail kiosk maps that the chamber provides. So these are located in, at the gazebo in city parking lot, and then again, at the Oakarm and Rust Stop on the trailhead. These are updated for 2023 with new advertisers, and they're just essentially a map of Cannon Falls. I want, the chamber would like to say thank you to our flower basket sponsors this year. The flower baskets are up and have been for a couple of weeks. Thank you to the sponsors for making these happen. Public Works Department for putting them up, maintaining them, and then Cromrecreation who supply them. And moving on to chamber events. Next week, next Wednesday, June 14th, is our next chamber member breakfast, and this is open to the public if they want to come. Our speaker is Keller Bartman Properties, who will be speaking of the new, about the new apartment complex in Cannon Falls. We just ask if you do want to come, please RRCP to the chamber. This is at 7:00 AM here in the city chamber. And June 19th is a chamber golf tournament. We're still looking for teams to sign up for this, and we also need volunteers to help the day of, so if you can do that, please contact me.
What day is that?
Yeah, that is a Monday at Cannon Golf Club. And future events, we're working on a ladies' night to happen in July, and then August 4th is a Cannon Car Cruisers, or the Cannon Cruises Car Cruise, and we'll have an event that night as well. And then just wanted to touch base quick on other community upcoming events. June 9th, Cannabell's has an open house for their cheese plant. The Fire Mustard is June 17th at Hannah's Bend. The Cannon Falls Lions Father's Day Pancake Breakfast is June 18th at the Fairgrounds. And then on June 25th is the Vase Spring Garden Annual Tractor Parade. That is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, the EDA met on June 1st. I'll try to run through a little bit of that agenda. We talked about the Smith Small Town Grant and applying for that. Legislative update, we, the city was gifted $469,000 for use towards John Birch Park, and specifically towards the first base side limestone rock wall and the cement seating above it and the dugout there. So thankful that that passed and that, that didn't get kicked down the can for next legislative session. We talked a little bit more about hardwood estates, and then we had a discussion about lodging tax for establishments here in town, the Caravan Motel and the Grand State. That's it. Park Board met also on June 1st. Derek?
Yep. Just a couple of things we did. The fair wanted to put a sign on John Birch Park fence, which is already up, and we had some discussion about the pool. For Public Works, which is next, I'll just take that. Everything was on the consent agenda, except we are advertising for a Public Works Maintenance II position, so hopefully we get some good applicants.
All right. We'll go around the horn. Sarah, anything you'd like to add? Laura?
Um, I just wanted to encourage the community that is watching, or if anyone knows of anyone, the Small Cities Development Program grant that the city of Cannon Falls was awarded to refurbish or renovate any homes or update for energy efficiency, siding, roof, whatever. We did get a report today from SEMCRA, and the goal is to be able to fix up 21 homes or to help out 21 homes. And 25 applications were sent out to inquiring people, and they've received 15 back, and two of them are pending inspection, meaning that their projects, they've, most likely, they've qualified income-wise, and now the project that they're requesting, whether it's windows, siding, roof, whatever the project is, are now being inspected to make sure that the project qualifies. And then they do have another application in review that is being verified for eligibility. And then six of the applications that they received were actually over the income limit, so they unfortunately weren't qualifying individuals. So I just wanted to encourage anyone to continue to apply or inquire about it. We do have packets here at City Hall, right in front of Ellen's window. We've got envelopes with the applications, or you can go online to SEMCRA's website, and you can apply there as well.
Great. Chief, anything?
Believe it or not, in less than a month, we're going to be at fair time. So, you know, just a reminder for residents, for the parade, there's no parking along the route. Parts of it will get closed off, you know, as we get closer to the start of the time. And just to remind everybody to enjoy themselves at the fair.
Neil?
Been working on the pay study. We've had two meetings with David Drown and Associates so far. We got three more scheduled. We should have a, a plan back to you by July 11th, now that we've changed the meeting date. So that should, we've got it on the fast track. As long as we get our work done, they'll get theirs done, and, and July 11th is going to be, then after that, guess what? We're going to start budget time, and we'll be doing some work sessions, and we'll be talking to you guys about our needs, and, and hopefully we'll, we'll keep it under control this year. I think it might take a couple of years to get back in fighting shape. I don't think we can raise all our capital funds all at once. Maybe it's going to take a couple of years to get it there. We got to reevaluate. Now that we've got Jed coming, new Public Works Director, we'll be working on updating that with his, and then we'll be working with the chief on updating his, and, and of course, the fire chief on updating them. But I, the amount of, that it's went up, we're not going to be able to do it all at once. But we'll, we'll get there. We'll get this thing back in shape. But it's just, it, it hit hard, and when you used to buy a truck for 30-some thousand, now it's 50-some thousand, it's, you know, 30, 40% increase. You can't do that all at once, so.
All right. Thank you, Neil. Lisa, anything from you?
No.
Ryan?
One quick question for you, Neil. When does a pool parking lot start? I've been getting a couple of questions on that.
After the pool closes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah, that was part of the contract.
Okay. Derek? Diane? Steve?
Nothing.
I just want to say thank you to Maggie and the chamber. Fun Fest was actually really successful. It was a ton of fun. They did have that, try to score a goal on the mayor, and I didn't let a single kid score, and it wasn't that I was being rough. And it wasn't that I was being rough on them. The goal was so small, I felt bad. I should have just got out of the way and let the kids be two steps away. It was barely outside my feet. There's a picture. No, I am a competitive person, but it was not, it was not that way. Uh, it was a ton of fun, and if we get to do that again, I will step aside and let every kid score. But, uh, a ton of fun. I'm glad that Fun Fest is back. It felt normal, and it was beautiful weather. It was nice to be outside. So, uh, with that said, we've got 4th of July. We already moved our meeting back, so everybody enjoy yourself, enjoy the fair, uh, enjoy the parade, have a ton of fun at all of those events.
We have a meeting before that.
Oh, that's right, we have one more. Sorry, I thought this whole, shoot, I thought we were getting another month off. No, but with that, with that said, uh, we can adjourn if I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Derek, second from Diane. All those in favor? Opposed? We are adjourned.